Let me get with on the ball here and we're ready to go.
Okay, item number one, meeting with town council and executive session to prepare for contract negotiations with non-bargaining employees. Oh my gosh, I'm sorry, we're on squirrel duty. Carrie.
Okay.
Employee bargaining pursuant to general law chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, two and seven, and Suffolk Construction versus D.CAM four forty-nine, Mass. four forty-four, two thousand and seven, Town Administrator. Item number two, meeting with town council and defense council and executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, three, six and seven, in Suffolk Construction versus D.CAM four forty-nine, Mass. four forty-four, two thousand and seven, to discuss Richard Thompson versus the Town of Sherburne, Etelle, Civil Action, twenty-one eighty-one, C.V. oh one zero zero four. Item number three, meeting with town council and executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, three, six and seven, in Suffolk Construction versus D.CAM four forty-nine, Mass. four forty-four, two thousand and seven, to discuss Thirty-One Hunting Lane, Forty-One North Main Street, I. Golebaski, Etelle versus the Town of Sherburne, Land Court Number Twenty-One, M.I.S.C.P.S. zero 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 one ninety-three, parentheses, H.P.S., and Thirty-One Hunting Lane, L.L.C. versus the Sherburne Board of Appeals, Housing Appeals Committee Number Twenty-Twenty-One dash oh five, and Forty-One North Main Street, L.L.C. versus Sherburne Board of Appeals, Housing Appeal Committee Number Twenty-Twenty-One dash zero six. Item number four, discussion with Labor Council regarding collective bargaining strategy for negotiation with Sherburne Police Association, Mass. Coalition of Police Local One Fifty-Eight, the Police Bargaining Unit, pursuant to General Law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, three, seven, and Suffolk Construction versus D.CAM four forty-nine, Mass. forty, four forty-four, two thousand and seven. I will now mute myself.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, correct me, I always forget to vote on the agenda. Do we vote on the executive session agenda in open session before we go to executive? Is that right?
Yes.
So do you have a motion on the agenda as, or any amendments to the agenda as read by the Town Administrator?
Somebody else is ready to give the motion, Jeff.
I think so. Mary is muted, though.
I'll move. Approval.
Are you seconding, Marion?
I will second, yes.
All right, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Paul, you're on mute.
He said aye. I take that as a aye. The ayes have it. And I might as well, four to nothing. And I do declare the need to enter executive session for the four items read by the Town Administrator. So I need a second and a roll call vote to enter executive session.
Second.
Okay, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. So I'll turn the recording on pause. All right, welcome everybody to our official open session. We apologize for being forty-five minutes late. It's now eight thirty-three, and we are now going to start the open session of the Select Board Meeting of September eighth at eight thirty-three P.M. And I would now like to ask the Town Administrator to read the open session agenda, please.
Good evening. So after I read the agenda, the board can vote to amend or approve the agenda. There is a public comment section, but I have not heard from anybody that has one tonight. Items may be taken out of order and topics not anticipated forty-eight hours in advance may be added. Item number one is the consent agenda, which is the Town Administrator's payroll warrant with the next meeting schedule of February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. Item number two is to consider the signing of the collective bargaining agreement for the police unit. Item number three is the I.T. infrastructure update from Klaus Ullman. Item four is other post-employment benefits, investment policy amendment, Heidi Doyle, the Town Treasurer, and consideration of acceptance of the bond anticipation note award, Heidi Doyle, Town Treasurer. Then we'll have some appointments. First up is the Board of Assessors, and that will be Ed O'Neill for a term to expire June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, Catherine Pierce for a term to expire June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Then under the Groundwater Protection Committee, we have Tara Horahan for a term to expire June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Then we have under this Police Department, consideration of new, two new officers that Chief Thomas Galvin will discuss. Item number eight is the consideration of grants. One is the nine-one-one grant, Police Chief Thomas Galvin. The other one is the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Action Grant. Dorothy Von Herter as a sustainability coordinator will be here for that. Item number nine, ten and eleven will be brought to you by Sean Colleen, the D.P.W. Director. It is an update on North Main Street Railroad Grade Crossing and Signal Upgrades, update in possible support of permanent creation of the left-turn lane from North Main Street onto Lake Street, and consideration of approval to utilize funds from the D.P.W. Fire and Police Surplus Equipment Revolving Fund for the replacement, purchase of a replacement snowplow. And item number twelve is consideration of routine business, and we have the Select Board for that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Diane. Do I have any amendments, proposed amendments to the agenda? You're happy with this, please? Okay, do I have a motion to accept the agenda as read by the Town Administrator?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Paul?
I'm gonna say aye, but I wonder if I can make a motion to approve all items on the agenda and adjourn.
I don't know, but you should have done that about an hour and a half ago if you were gonna do it. All right, so the agenda's been approved, five to zero. Do I have any motion with respect to the consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. All right, now we're gonna move on to number two, consideration of the collective bargaining agreement. Police Chief Tom Galvin on the police union. Do I have a motion on this item?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement as was discussed in the executive session.
Second.
Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. Thanks very much, Tom.
No, thank you. Thank you all. I know the union will be happy.
We are too. Klaus, are you hiding somewhere here to give us an update on the I.T. infrastructure?
I am. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Well, again, thanks so much. I know you guys were provided a little bit of an update on paper. That's gonna have some more details, but I think in the interest of time, I'll just focus quickly on the currently ongoing projects and then see if you guys have any particular questions. So in terms of the projects, we have a town-wide phone system upgrade that is currently underway via the assistance of Harbor Networks. It's our vendor. That is going fairly well. We did run into a couple of minor issues, but all told, it was completely expected. Just have one site, the Police Department, left to complete the physical upgrade of the equipment, and we will be able to mark that project as complete.
When you say town-wide, you mean town government-wide, not involving private citizens, right?
Yes, Paul, thank you so much for the correction. Yes, we'll call it the town facility-wide phone system. So that would include the primary buildings of the town.
Thank you.
So item number two is just additional network cabling that is gonna be happening over the course of the next couple of weeks at the Town Hall. This is in preparation for an upgrade of our Wi-Fi access points to the building and provide additional services to the staff as well as residents if they are in the building there. This is something that has been sort of lagging quite a bit, as you guys might have experienced for previous meetings. So we're hoping to make a dramatic improvement on that here in the coming weeks.
This is our request, George. This is our FIOs update. I wanna make sure you're aware.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Yeah, exactly. And item number three is tied to that same thing. Again, I wanted to, you know, just highlight again, the thanks to Deb Seifring and Sean Colleen for their assistance with that project. We also had, we're able to purchase a number of additional access points that are gonna be provided as part of that project. We've also implemented, we're in the process of implementing both the network expansion and phone system expansion to the new library building. That's actually going fairly well. We're obviously a little bit behind schedule relative to the overall project, but I'm happy to say that we're gonna be ready for their connectivity as well as for their phones and access to the building by the time occupancy is ready. We also have some, we have some ongoing preparations that are gonna be happening, both at the Police Department and the Fire Department, as part of the transition to the Regional Dispatch Center. So there's a number of items involved there for communications, not only from a radio perspective, but also a network and video. So we are, we're meeting closely with the group, C.C. Technologies, who is leading that from the Regional Dispatch perspective, and we have a number of updates coming to some equipment as well as some expansion of existing systems. So we're hoping to see that completed here in the coming months.
So I had a question about that.
Absolutely.
So I understood, and I think the public understood, that the Regional Dispatch was up and running. And when I was reading your report about all the things that had to be done, it made me think that it's not up and running. Is the Regional Dispatch up and running?
No, they've always said by January first.
Yeah.
Yep, so we have a tentative start date right now of January second. I talked to the director about a week or so ago, and we're still on track for that. We're actually gonna be doing some testing of the fiber optic connection tomorrow.
Great. Thanks for the explanation. Thank you.
It's up and running. We're just not on it yet, I think.
The goal was always January first as far.
Exactly, I know, I know.
Yeah, correct. So the physical dispatch center that we are going to be integrating to, they are up and running and obviously serving a number of communities already. So this will be the work that we need to do from an infrastructural perspective to connect to that existing dispatch center.
Thank you.
Sure. The last thing, just to sort of make awareness, is that I'm gonna be working closely with Diane Moore's to continue the development of our I.T. policies. There's a number of the policies that have really not had a chance to be reviewed and updated over the last number of years, and so that's gonna be sort of an ongoing project in the background. And, you know, the coming months, we should be able to provide some additional updates and obviously be seeking your support and approval.
Anybody have any questions? Awesome. Thank you, Klaus. Appreciate your bailing this out and updating us.
Wonderful. Thanks, guys. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Heidi Doyle's up next on item four on O.P.E.B. Investment Policy Amendment.
Yes, good evening. So just for the public, we have retirement plans, and then we have what's called our O.P.E.B., which is the Other Post-Employment Benefits, which is the health care that retirees are eligible to get. So our retirement plan is run mainly through Middlesex County, but the town has a separate trust in that we will maintain our own O.P.E.B. account. And in the trust right now, there is a plan that we have, an investment plan that we approved to establish last year. And after getting more familiar with the plans and speaking with some of the advisors, it's been recommended that we move from our current mix of sixty-five, thirty-five to seventy-thirty. And that's all what I'm doing is presenting. The plan is just amending those two items that change to the mix of the investments, which is more in line with long-term, thirty-year investments.
You wanna explain what the sixty-five and the thirty-five are, what the difference?
I can go into briefly. It's basically your stocks and your bonds mix. And then when you go, you can also do with the seventy-thirty, a little bit of private equity, which we haven't had before. It's all still within line. It's just, O.P.E.B. Trust allows to use what's called a prudent investor status standard for investment, which is a little bit, gives you a little more latitude than the municipal trusts that you have.
And a little bit higher potential returns usually, so.
Yes, in the long run.
Which we also approved, I believe, for some of the library trust funds also a year or two ago, I think. Is that correct?
We're still waiting, I think, on the State House.
Yeah, but the Town Meeting approved it.
Right.
Yep, same thing.
So I'm asking for a move to approve amended O.P.E.B. of the Post-Employment Benefits Investment Plan as presented in your packet.
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
I am aye as well. Thank you on that one, Heidi. We don't go anywhere. We're now doing your Abundant Anticipation Note Award.
Great. And just as a side note, I do plan to invite Parker Elmore back next month to give the annual update on the O.P.E.B. account itself. So this next one is, we went out to bid on two million eight hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars in borrowing, which was for the library project, and then the light items in the last year's annual Town Meeting, or this year's annual Town Meeting, stormwater roadway management, Pine Hill School Floors and Woodhaven Windows. And we are doing a borrowing that's going up till next August to align with the prior borrowing for the D.P.W. truck that's already out there, and we're asking for a motion to award the bid for the bond anticipation note of two million eight hundred ninety-eight thousand, the library building project, and ATM twenty-two capital items to Oppenheimer and Company has submitted. Their bid came in at three point four three nine four percent. That was, they came at three point seven five with an eight thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollar premium, so the net is three point four three nine four. It's about equal to the long-term rates right now, just in case anyone's asking.
So moved.
Second.
Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye, and I have two questions.
Oh, all right. Let's just finish the vote then. But you can answer this, Paul?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. Go ahead, ask your questions.
Woodhaven Windows, does it matter if it's a grant anticipation or a bond anticipation note? Is there any difference in those? I know they can be different, and do they, are we not gonna bond that, actually not gonna bond the two hundred and thirty thousand?
Right, right now, it's because we do not have, we're slated to get an earmark, but we have nothing that's saying we get the earmark, so I'm still considering it as a bond anticipation note. You know, because we don't have, I have nothing in writing that says we have a grant coming for the amount, for any amount.
That makes sense in my system. I guess the second question is, maybe it's a bigger question for maybe advisory at some point. It looks like we're funding some, you know, several hundred thousand dollars of roadway management every single year, which is a good thing. At what point do we actually stop buying that and put that into our operational funds, or a certain amount of money into that, and not pay the three, three to four percent interest? Now that, you know, when rates were one or two percent or whatever it was, no one cared.
Right.
But people are gonna start caring about it, and it does look like we're dedicated to putting, you know, between that and stormwater, at least a couple hundred grand every single year into it. I guess at what point do we actually take it out and just use operational funds?
I think that's a great question for this year. That's why I kind of mentioned that the bond rates are now fairly equal to with long-term bonding and short-term bonding. It might be the time to look at operational, putting it into the operational side.
Yeah.
Well, if it's a replacement plan, though, part of the reason, and advisor can speak to this, is that we spread the cost out over time, so future residents are paying for their share of the road use.
I get that, but if they'll be paying that operational fund ten years from now, under their operational funds, if we're committed to spending, let's make up number, three hundred thousand a year, no matter what.
Yes.
It doesn't matter. They'll be paying for their next ten, their.
If we consistently do that, we haven't always consistently done that, but yes, that's right. And I think before we get too far, I think Jackie's gonna tell me she needs our John Hancock's tomorrow morning. Is that right?
Yes. Yes, I'd like at least three of you that could be available. Jackie is available tomorrow morning. I don't know what availability is here.
I'll be there around, I have a call at nine, so I'll be there around probably nine forty-five, I would guess.
I'll come by. What time will Cam works? I can come by anytime.
At around nine o'clock work?
Sure.
Can we get one more person? Marion, are you free, or?
Yeah, I can do it tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that, do you need to say something additionally, Jackie? Is that okay? We're good. All right. She's got me programmed. How easy to program.
Thank you, thank you, Jackie.
Thank you, Heidi. Appreciate it. Now we'll do consideration of appointments. We'll start with the Board of Assessors. You've read the two names here. I don't know either person, so do we wanna let both of them say hi? I'm not sure who's here.
Sure. Good evening.
Which one's going first?
Wendy's talking.
Oh, there we are.
Yes. Hi, how are you? Wendy Alasse, Director of Assessing. Actually, we have Drew Vaughn, who is just going to do a very brief introduction.
I see him with his dog.
Yes.
Hey, yeah, I'll take it away. I, you know, I don't have too much by way of introduction. I will say, both of the candidates are incredibly impressive. They have a lot of experience in the space, which is a massive improvement over the currently lay board that we have in place. I believe Ben Williams and Bill Seymour have tendered their resignations already. So we do have the two vacancies. You know, the Assessors Board met in August to meet the candidates and review resumes, and at that time, we unanimously recommended that the Select Board approve their appointments.
Great. So do I have a motion?
So moved. Both.
Both appointments? And George seconded. Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye, with a thanks to Drew for agreeing to stay on.
Yeah, and thanks to Wendy and the whole team and to welcome Catherine. Next one's groundwater protection. Do you wanna introduce it first, Tom?
Sure, Tom Trainer, Groundwater Protection Committee Chair. We're excited that somebody as experienced and as talented as Tara Horahan has been elected to the Water Commissioners, and the Water Commissioners have appointed her to our Groundwater Protection Committee. You might have seen Tara's resume. She's got almost twenty years of professional engineering, water supply experience, and we've got some talented people on our committee, but nobody's got those kind of credentials. So this is, this would be a fantastic addition, and she's been attending our meetings for the last six months or so.
That hasn't dissuaded her so far.
I'll move to appoint Tara Horahan to the.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, before we vote, Tara, do you just wanna say hi really quick?
Yes, I can say hello. I'm kind of in the dark here.
That's okay.
But yes, as Tom said, you know, I've been excited to join the committee, and I've been on the calls, and I look forward to helping them out.
Awesome. Well, thank you for volunteering. We really appreciate it. So now we'll take a vote. Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tara.
Next is the consideration of two new officers, Tom?
Oh, good evening. I'll be very brief, or as brief as I can with this. But before I start, I just wanted to recognize how we kind of came to these two openings, the first being a resignation for one of our officers who went off to a larger agency. But the second, as of August thirtieth, Lieutenant David Bento is retired, and he kind of wanted to leave and go off without a lot of fanfare, but I just felt I needed to recognize him and his thirty-two-plus years of service to the residents of Sherburne. And, you know, that's where one of the vacancies come for tonight, and we, you know, he helped me in my, in my start here, and he did a lot for the town over his career, and I just wanted to recognize that. But I have two officers for you tonight. The first is Elwa Rueg. Comes to us from a little different path, actually born in Switzerland. Yeah, educated, you know, in France for high school, was an avid baseball player, actually was on the Swiss National U-18 team and played in the European Championships, attended Cardiff University in the U.K., earned a master's degree in criminology, came to the United States, and eventually became a teacher at the Advanced Math and Science Academy in Marlborough. So just out of full disclosure, how I met him actually is one day, he showed up in the police station in Berlin, and kind of like a cold call, and said he wanted to be a police officer. So after I got to know him a little bit, sponsored him to the Reserve Intermittent Police Academy. He graduated there, eventually became a part-time officer in the town of Carlisle. A lot of parallels to Sherburne, which is good for us, and then was hired, actually, as a full-time officer in the town of Northboro. He served the town of Northboro for the last year and a half, and now will be transitioning to us here in Berlin, Sherburne. I think we're very lucky to bring his, I guess, worldly perspective to things, and also coming from education. You know, he has that ability to interact with people and had, you know, interacted with young people every day. I think that's an important quality that's gonna help us very well. The second candidate is Thomas Tempesta of Franklin. Tom grew up in Walpole, graduated from Walpole High School, and attended Becker College in Worcester. We graduated with a degree in criminal justice, but didn't immediately follow criminal justice path. He had a career, had a career in sales up until now, and as a result of the pandemic, was laid off and looked to make a switch. And he was fortunate enough that Chief Stone of the Holliston Police Department sponsored him to go to the police academy. And just last week, he graduated from the Plymouth Police Academy. And, you know, he'll bring his sales background, his ability to take cold calls and, you know, acquire new clients, you know, some of those people that we've all probably hung up on. You know, he's taken that in stride. He's been able to create and be successful in a sales career, and that's gonna translate well to us here in Sherburne.
That's awesome. Do we have a move for approval? Do we have a second?
Second.
Before we vote, do you each wanna say hi briefly? Did you say Eloy?
Yes, Elwa. I know it's a complicated one.
Yeah, yeah.
But yeah, thanks very much, the board. Chief Galvin, thank you, and I'm very much looking forward to work in Sherburne.
Excellent. Thank you. And Tom? Do you go by Tom or Thomas?
Tom or Thomas, just not Tommy. But yeah, I'm excited to, I'm excited to be a part of the Sherburne community, serve for you guys. I'm also the person that you appointed today, Ed O'Neill, I grew up with, so I've known him for about twenty-five years, and he's a great guy.
Good. Well, thanks to both of you, and welcome aboard.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, Tom. So now we're gonna vote on that one. We took the motion. Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. And Tom is up again for the first grant.
Yes, very quickly. So annually, the town has applied for three state nine-on-one grants in the past, a support and incentive grant, which is used for equipment and various other things, a training grant, which is used to train our officers on the desk and their requirements they have to maintain annually. And the third is an emergency medical dispatch grant. So the only grant we are eligible to apply for, needed to actually apply for this year, is the Emergency Medical Dispatch Grant, and that helps us offset the costs for a third-party vendor that provides some emergency dispatch assistance to us in critical medical calls. So that is, or up to eighteen thousand dollars, and we will use that, we'll spend that up until we transition into the regional center, and it's a reimbursement grant.
Excellent.
Move to accept the grant, use it for the purposes.
Do you wanna, we need to hear it from Dorothea, but do you wanna just do the police one first? Is that what you're saying? Are you making a motion for both?
Well, I always accept money. I'm happy to make.
I know your hand is, your hand is always out. All right, we'll vote on the police, we'll vote on the police one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. Thanks again, Tom.
Thank you.
Dorothea, you've been very patient. Thank you for hanging in with us.
Sure, guys. Hi, everyone. I'm here tonight to share the happy news that we were successful in getting a M.V.P. grant, that's a grant for municipal vulnerability preparedness. And we got thirty-eight thousand one hundred forty-five dollars to help to hire a consultant to help us doing a climate action plan in town. That's a project that will be spent over nine months and come to conclusion by June of next year. It's basically, it will, we will have the consultant help us with some engagement. it will, we will have the consultant help us with some, um, engagement, um, um, meetings with the communities. And we will have the boards and important committees speak to climate change and then find, um, priority measures, like ten to fifteen priority measures for us and for Sherborne for mitigating, uh, emissions and reducing our vulnerability to climate change. So that's the gist of this grant. Um, we have committed, uh, in-kind hours to this project as well. Mainly myself and Gino and of course, uh, DPW, um, Council on Aging, um, the schools and a couple of, in the hundred thirty hours of volunteers. Um, predominantly the Energy Committee helping us to, to, with the outreach and engagement in, in the process of finding these priorities.
So that was my question, actually. The grant is a twenty-five percent local contribution and we can do it in kind and that was great that you answered the question I was going to ask. So we have these things in place that's going to cover the twenty-five percent?
Yes, we do have, um, you know, the in-kind hours, as I said, is, is mainly, um, coming from my side and from Gino's side. And then, uh, volunteers that will help us. We have to recruit those and I'm, I'm positive that we can find, uh, through the Energy Committee and, uh, through other volunteers in town to help us with the outreach effort. Um, there is two hundred thirty-four hours for the consultant, uh, budgeted into that. And we have, um, in the last six weeks, we have been looking for consultants and have finalized on one person who is able to, to do this for us. Her name is Carrie Hewitt. She's done that for, um, that same kind of consulting for other communities like, uh, Weston and Dedham. So she knows what she is doing. And I see Marion's hand up.
You just answered my question, Dorothea.
Okay. So we will, um, we'll have her, uh, join us and she's also leading these kind of like town hall meetings with the entire communities. What I'm pledging tonight is that we will have to create a kind of like, um, um, cl- um, Climate and Resilience Working Group that's, um, mainly eight to twelve people from the committees in town that have, um, their kind of like, um, purview overlaps with climate change, some thinking about planning committee. I'm thinking, um, a planning board and I'm thinking open space committee. And, um, hopefully, and not only hopefully, but I hope that select board member, um, our current chair is also joining in that, um, working group because we need input from our basically highest echelon of, of government on this. And I'm hoping that also somebody from advisory is, is joining this working group, which is steering the entire process. So we will be sending out invitations and I'm hoping we can find, um, enough people that will help us in the next nine months to really come together with a good plan. I think it comes as a very opportune time since we, we passed, uh, the Climate Emergency Declaration in April. And having this money on our hands right now is helping us to deliver on, on the pledge that the town did on, on finding solutions to climate change.
So could I suggest that the contract with this consultant be, shared with the town administrator and possibly reviewed by town council as to form?
Yes, you can. Um, we have, um, sent it to her to fill this out and we can certainly pass it by, um, the town council, Mr. Petrini, right?
Yes, we're just curious.
Through, through Diane, though. Just have.
Just curious about any permit that might be required for this.
Yep. Marion has another question.
Uh, yeah, Dorothea, uh, you have this long outline. I'm wondering to what degree that outline was predetermined by, by the state? And to what degree that outline is, is the brainchild of our, uh, Energy and Sustainability Committee?
Um, you mean like the outline, meaning like the, the scope and the tasks of, of the, um,
Task to be completed by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three?
Yeah, that is a state kind of like, um, uh, prerequisite that, um, action grants. If they do not entail, let's say, a construction of something, uh, if they are kind of a, um, an action grant that has to do with like, um, with, with creating a document or a master plan for a community should be finished by, by, by the fiscal year. Uh, we do have, uh, the chance to prolong, uh, but we have to, I think, announce that by May first if, if we run over that time. But I'm positive by looking at other plans and, and having talked to colleagues that have done action planning that, uh, September, uh, mid-September through June of next year will give us enough time to come up with a really good, uh, plan. Uh, we do have the support of somebody who has done this, who's doing this professionally, uh, who has worked with other communities that are bigger in size. Um, and, uh, as I said, once we have really good climate and resilience working group of consisting of board and committee members and we will have, um, a good plan and we already have like a time schedule that I need to basically hammer out with, um, with select board and other people. Um, we're thinking of three community events and also three kind of like climate and resilient working group events. So, um, it's mainly about, we know where we have our issues. It's kind of like finding these priorities and, um, finding ways of how what we can say is short-term goals, medium-term goals and long-term goals and who will be in charge to help to realize them.
Yeah, that's, that's good. My question was really a much more simple one.
Yeah.
It was just, uh, you know, sometimes the state determines the outline of the thing and what you have to address. Uh, as in the housing production plan or the open space plan. Is this like that? Is this a, uh, the organization of how it's done documented or required by the state or is this a, an original sort of outline by the, by your committee?
It is, um, original plan actually, uh, by myself and by Gino, um, following other, um, climate action plan applications and what, climate action plans have been around since a very long time and it's, it's literally looking at, it has a formula to it, right? Um, this is a municipal vulnerability grant, meaning like, uh, it will look at, at methods, how we can reduce, uh, emissions from our buildings, from our transportation, from our waste and, uh, from other sectors. But at the same time, it looks at the resilience, which is our natural environment, um, that is suffering from, from the effects of climate change. And all of you know drought, um, precipitation and the issues we are recently touched upon. It's like bacteria in, in farm pond and so on. So this grant, we submitted with the resilience component of, of looking at our, um, on our ecological resources and what's the current state of these ecological resources, um, in regards to the tree canopy on private and public land and how we can, um, basically, um, look at the current landscape practices in our community and find ways how we educate people on protecting our natural resources. Uh, that is the trees, the water resources and so on. So that will be addressed on top of mitigation of emissions. So that has those two components.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dorothea. Go ahead. Thanks, Paul. Do I have a second?
We accept the grant and apply it for the purposes stated in the grant.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I might as well. Thank you very much, Dorothea.
You're welcome.
Now we have, uh, nine, ten and eleven, um, Sean Colleen to update us on the North Main Street Railroad Crossing, uh, the turn lane at North Main and Lake and, um, utilization of funds for a snowplow. Three items. You're high, you there, Sean?
You there?
Yeah, sure you are.
So, um, most people don't know, the selectmen probably do know because I forwarded some emails. Mass Coastal has finally notified us that, uh, we will be getting a new grade crossing at North Main Street.
Hooray.
And, uh, well, that's good, but as I had suspected and feared, not everything's in there all at once. Um, for those that don't know, the state owns that line. Um, so the, the money's coming through the state. It's actually Mass DOT money, which is good and bad. They put it out to bid and, uh, I happened to bump into the contractor when they were getting ready to cut the road and asked them for the set of plans and, and then through my contacts at Mass Coastal, they sent me the plans. They did not. And we have confirmed in, in some emails that they did not put out to bid any upgrades for signals. Uh, gates in any form or fashion. So I made more calls and text messages and, and emails than I like to think of over the past couple of weeks. Uh, reaching out to Mass DOT, the people we know, people on the rail division, um, and Mass Coastal. And actually, the president of Mass Coastal responded back that, that he had pushed on Mass DOT and got a commitment that they're going to put gates in. Um, so it, it's a little bit last minute, but it looks like it's probably going to happen. I don't think during the same phase of, of the, you know, ripping up the grade crossing, that they'll actually get the, the signals and gates in, but they put the infrastructure in, they put the foundations in. That's the important part because once they screw it up, they won't go back and fix it. If they didn't put the foundations in for the gates, they'd probably, it would be a long time before we'd get it done. That being said, um, there's some work on us. Um, for those that don't know, we have a water line that goes onto that railroad crossing. It's deep enough to the best of our knowledge that it's not going to be affected at all. Um, they sent me the specs because I told them we probably want to put another casing in, in case something happens. You, you only get really one shot at this. So I, I have the specs. They've offered to work with Manifred, the contractor, and make sure that it gets in if we need it. We confirmed the gas company put in a new casing in the nineties, so that doesn't need to get redone. Um, even though they still have an old steel line under there. But we have some storm water. We, we do have a storm water that's pretty shallow under the crossing. So, um, I have a camera lined up to do an inspection. What I'm getting at is we, there's, there's some money we're going to need to spend and I'm working on it. Um, it's been a lot of work. I probably have some more work coming up to make sure we get what we need because we can't go back six months later and go, wow, I wish I, I wish we had put a line in under there so we could punch a sewer line or a water line or something else. Um, it'd be decades before anything would ever get done or at a much higher cost to try to punch it through. So the intent is we put a casing in. It's not a huge cost. I think I'll cover it in the budget. I may need to come back. Um, if there's something wrong with the, with the storm drain lines, then it's going to need to get fixed when they do it, but I'm trying to get ahead of that. So they know what they're going to uncover. Eric's got his hand up. I'm eager to.
Where did he go? There he is. Go ahead, Eric.
So, uh, number one, are they doing anything with the sidewalk crossing? Are they doing any improvements there? Or if a gate goes in, will it be gated on the sidewalk crossing? Do you know what I mean? Because that's something, we spent a lot of money, put sidewalks on both sides of it and, um, I'm not sure how compliant it is in the actual railroad and it actually tracks itself.
So in the drawing that I was sent, um, it specifically showed one side, um, which is somewhat predictable. Uh, you know, a year and a half ago, there wasn't two cro- two sidewalks there. Um, it is to be, to conform with ADA compliance. Um, the only caveat was I, I said, well, the town spec is cast iron tactile panels. That's what we put downtown and their response was they're having trouble getting anything. Well, we're, all of us are having trouble. So I've actually ordered panels to keep them stock. Um, so if they show up with red panels or yellow panels, uh, we'll have some, but, but it is in the specs to put it. Now, it's only on one side because the original engineered plans don't show the other sidewalk, but anything they touch, they need to bring up.
I'm, I'm just.
I believe the gates, um, do accommodate that because they, they were talking about double cantilever gates. It's a very big foundation that goes in. Um, and, and that's why it's key that they get put in now because I, I think part of the foundation ends up under the rail. It's a nine-by-nine foundation that goes in.
Okay. Yeah, it's good. I know. I, I think it's required that if you put a gate in for the road, you have to put a gate in for the sidewalks and that, that, that's why I'm concerned. And they might not improve even in the face of ADA, the, uh, the section between if they don't have it ready for a gate, you know what I mean? There's two types of gates. You can have ones that go like this, which one goes down for car, one goes down for sidewalk. Or you can do the ones that are just long and just kind of like go like this and so the sidewalk portion is underneath and this lifts up. I don't know if this is still compliant, but it should be an affordable way for them to do it. Either way, um, my second thing is, I mean, just for the boards, uh, then I should advocate to put as many and as large a casing pipes you can every time you wrap up a railroad crossing. Make it all a casing pipe. Do everything. If we give them the pipe to get ourselves or whatever it takes to do, just put in those casing pipes. Stormwater is tough because you have the elevations to deal with. Stormwater is, uh, always get tricky because you have to know the elevations, but anything else, know the elevations, just put it in, put it in for the gas company. I don't care because it's going to, it's literally going to cost, it's not exaggeration, one hundred twenty thousand times more to do it after this project is done than this given the pipe. I had something else to say, but that's, I'll stop there.
So if I could, I just want to remind everybody about the accident that occurred at this rail crossing. So that gates, I think are now proven to be necessary from our own experience here in town. This was a car, I believe it was a car.
There's two, two incidents, I think, actually.
Oh, the two, okay.
Two, two since I started in November, yeah.
So the point is that this is, has been proven to be dangerous. Gates are truly necessary. There's a lot of rail activity at this location. There's heavy traffic at this location. And there's always the nut who wants, is in a hurry and wants to get on with his life without waiting for the train to go through. So that, that mixture really needs the discipline of gates. So I'm delighted to hear that we're going to get gates. I think it's necessary as for public safety. Thank you, Sean.
Your hands still up, Eric? Do you have another?
I put it back up. I'm, I'm, how much downtime do you think I got to shut down the road for when I actually do the work?
One weekend.
Okay, over the weekend.
They, they close it after the last Friday train and they, the plant, they, they plan to open it overnight before Monday.
Okay, very good.
Um, great.
They'll probably do five or six crossings the same weekend. That's what they did last time with Hunting and the previous time with, when they did Prospect and but we, you know, that's when, that, that's why it's a lot of work to stay ahead of it. To make sure we don't have a storm drain pipe that, that screws them up because they, they got to get the rail open. So they'll just throw our stuff out of the way.
Yep.
As you know.
Yeah, everyone, everyone won, uh, Woodland Street and Lake Street. There's going to be a lot of traffic that weekend.
Right.
All right. And, uh,
So that, that was it. I just, that was mostly a public service announcement. We'll, we'll see that coming. It's definitely not happening in October. Um, I think it was late November, but, but again, they don't notify us with a whole lot of, um, lead time. Uh, so we'll see what happens and it, and it may get pushed out because of the gates, but it's much more important to get it done right than,
Absolutely.
Try to get it done. Uh, the next item, if you, if you've been through last time I saw you, a week and a half, I guess it was two. The next item, if you, if you've been through, last time I saw you a week and a half, I guess it was two weeks ago. We talked about the attempt to try to do a left turn lane. The reason this is kind of timely is, is we were slated for Saturday to chip seal North Main Street. It's now the following Saturday. So it's a week out. But immediately following that, we obviously reline the entire length of North Main Street because it'll be completely black. There'll be no trace of any of the lines. What we did and may look like a couple of kids did it because we had to hand paint them. We don't own a paint machine anymore. And we couldn't get the, the line painters in quick enough to do it. We laid out the road now that there's granite curbs. And we laid out two 10 foot lanes, which makes a turn lane and a straight lane. And then, uh, the 10 foot six lane painted with a, you know, it's about 11 and a half feet of asphalt for the northbound lane, uh, going by Lake Street to try it to show that, um, the cars will somewhat follow it. We could only push it as far as we could because we, we kept the traffic flowing. So we were kind of dodging the cars with one lane of traffic and a couple of cops trying to relay the traffic through. And we were also limited, you know, when you blackout, uh, lines, you gotta sit and wait before the paint dries before the traffic can travel on it. So it was a little bit of an experiment to try to get it done. It, it is proven to work. It fits. The cars can get around each other. Anyone that travels that intersection often knows that the left turning vehicles on the lake constantly had cars going to the right side. That was part of the reason we had to put the granite in because the, the cars were traveling off the road and eroding the, the edge of the road where the sidewalk should be. So we're in the process of fixing that and upgrading the sidewalk. So unless there's any compelling reason, we'd like to keep that permanent. Once we paint the lines on a new chip sealed road, we really don't want to change them because it'll be very difficult to paint over.
It was working well. I came to there on rush hour. I can't remember what day it was. I think Thursday or no Wednesday. It was very, very effective. So Dan, do you have a question? You want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, I, I do. Thanks very much. It's Dan Wolf. I'm, uh, two Lake Street. Uh, obviously on the corner of Lake and, and, uh, North Main Street. Uh, first of all, I want to thank Sean and his team in the town for fixing the sidewalk. Which is something that, uh, I use a lot, but my wife uses every day to go walk into town. And in conjunction with that, you know, it's been very difficult to cross, uh, Route 27, uh, especially during weekdays where there's a lot of traffic. And you have to kind of sit there and, and kind of almost start waving at the people and almost wanting to turn your hand around in a different direction to get them to stop. But, you know, when they finally do stop, then somebody on the, you know, the left-hand side will stop and we'll be able to cross. And anybody who's coming south on, uh, North Main Street and wants to skirt around that left-hand, uh, turning vehicle at least has to slow down. So the problem now becomes that with, with that, uh, extra lane there that people are going to be whizzing by or at least going much faster. Don't need that much more dangerous place to cross the street. And, uh, that's the only sidewalk into town from this area. So we are taking that, you know, a, a bad situation and, and at least from our side for, for as far as crossing the street goes and, and making it a worse situation and kind of in the back of my mind, I'm thinking we really fought for this not to happen for when the, uh, when the state wanted to widen 27 because we thought the traffic was going to be too much. As, as my wife said, it would just rush them to get them to the, to the backup when they get over on, uh, by Butler Street. So, you know, I, I understand that Tam really wants to get things more efficient yet. It also seems to be when it's, when it is crowded, more difficult to make a left-hand turn from Lake onto, uh, 27 heading south. Sean and I had, had some discussions about this and you know, I think the one thing we're in agreement is that it's, it's not a great place to cross and, you know, when we talked about it, Sean said, well, you know, it, just the way it is, and then correct me when I'm wrong, Sean, please, that, you know, we, we really couldn't put a, um, a crosswalk there and make it safer. And I mean, just having a crosswalk there may, may get somewhat safer, but not that much because people don't maybe pay attention. But we talked about maybe there's another place, you know, to, to put a crosswalk and that was maybe, uh, you know, closer to Coolidge and, and by Dousen's. So, you know, we could just, you know, walk up there and, and cross there. But the problem then becomes that we're walking in the street, especially if you're walking with a dog or something. And now you're, now you're walking up the street, uh, on the northern side of North Main Street. And, you know, maybe during the nicer parts of the year, we can, uh, we can walk on the, uh, grass and, and if it's not too muddy. But as soon as winter comes, it really becomes an impossible situation again. So, you know, what, you know, what can we do to, to take care of that? And can maybe we pay for having a sidewalk put in between Lake and somewhere at Dousen's, uh, parking lot? And then having a special crosswalk put there that will really be much more effective because that's already a place where people have to slow down.
So to answer some of that, that, the the crosswalk, crosswalk at Lake will never happen because it, it can't possibly be ADA compliant. And it, it, and it would never be deemed safe because it's on that curb. What I did mention to Dan, and I, I think maybe he had forgot, there used to be a crosswalk that went from, uh, the driveway at what is one Coolidge, um, which is technically on North Main now across to Dousen's parking lot. You can see that in old Google street views. It's gone, it's gone. It's been gone for a few years. The, um, you know, by the guideline, as Eric knows, it, it's not really a legal crosswalk because it's going from a driveway to a parking lot. It is flatter though. It, it's, it is mid-block, which isn't always ideal. But what we could do in the future is a small piece of sidewalk from Lake to not quite to Dousen's main parking lot, but, but just before it, there's a grass strip there. And then there's a nice, everything's at least level, uh, which it's not at Lake Street. The sidewalk is quite a bit higher than the road. But at that section, then we could do a, a crosswalk. And it, you know, it's very inexpensive now to have the, you know, the, the RFB lights like we have downtown and, and in front of the church. And that would possibly make it safer. I'm not offering that today. But that's really the solution to, to the problem. There is a lot of people walking up Lake Street. That's not really an ideal street to be walking on anyway, but, um, they, they do dead end it at Lake and North Main, so that's probably a better place. And so it, it really doesn't have much effect on the left turn lane. It, it, it's really finding them a better place to cross.
I mean, we, we'd be perfectly happy if, uh, you know, if you put a whole sidewalk on this side of the street all the way in, into town, that would, you know, that would prevent us from having to cross, uh, South, uh, North Main Street, but we know that that's not really going to happen. So what we're trying to do is figure out a safe way to make it happen and, and, you know, in a, in a somewhat economical and, and in a way that makes it useful and not that you have to go 10 miles out of your way to cross the street either. So, you know, I, I'm hoping we can do something because right now it, it, it's worse than ever trying to wait for somebody, you know, and for everybody to stop so you can cross properly.
I'll say mid-block crosswalks are a dual edged sword. In some cases, they may be more dangerous than not, to be honest. It provides a legal right wing crossing, but, uh, people who cross there get a false sense of security and safety. Uh, there was a severe injury in Framingham and a death in Somerville in the last few years of people right in the mid-block crosswalks. Just kind of walking right, you know, crosses right in this, you know, getting plowed into. It's very tragic. I, I would not advocate for any mid-blocks without RFPs. I don't like the one at Golden Street as, as it is right now. You know, we're on that blind turn, I think, um, and, but Sherburne's difficult. You know, we've got one stoplight and a handful of stop signs in town. So having a stop controlled crosswalk is not ideal as we start putting in more and more sidewalks. The only comment I'll say is wherever that mid-block crosswalk winds up in there, remember that's a traffic cluster in that area there. I like this left turn lane because it opens up that traffic cluster a little bit and gets, you know, prevents the backup coming up to Coolidge Street. And, um, any crosswalk you put in there really has to have an RF, RFB. There's no question about that.
I appreciate your input.
It's all, uh, you know, fine that we're getting the, the traffic to move more quickly. And a lot of the people who really want to move more quickly aren't even people who are in town. So how are we going to preserve the safety for the people in town who want to cross that street? And really have no other way to get into a sidewalk to walk into town.
I don't think it's about.
Just to be clear, I'm not trying to make anybody move quickly.
Yes, this is not about that at all.
If I could make the speed limit 20 from your house to mine, it'd be 20. This is to flow a little bit better and not send the congestion all the way to Natick, but it, I think everybody should just tone it down to 25 miles an hour and wait till they hit South Main Street. This isn't about speed and, and that, the other thing we couldn't mimic is the 10 foot six lanes. That's not something we could do and, you know, in the 200 foot stretch we did, but the lanes, I, I'll remind everyone, the lanes from Natick. And frankly, it'll be through Natick when they ever finish their project, but we're matching what they're going to do. It's going to be 10 foot six lanes all the way from Natick to the lights. And that, you know, that'll have an effect on, on the perception at least as people head into that inner, both of those intersections. And that's, you know, we've, we've had the surveyors out to measure out that section of road so that it can be laid out right when we, you know, in a week and a, week and a half, after we chip seal it.
And I want, I want to, Eric, this is not about getting people through there quickly, but opening up that intersection as it is now. People knows out and they have gridlock. It actually prevents a safety concern. And, uh, the other alternative is actually fully signalized and put coordinated signals into Lake Street and College Street. And I just don't think that's realistic in, in the, in the, in the near future, to be honest with you. So I think this is really the only alternative that there is just to prevent, um, the accidents that are happening and to keep people from having gridlock as these two intersections interact with each other.
So.
We need to take a vote on this, Jeff?
So what is, what, what's, you know, and, and I know Sean has, has spent a lot of time doing this. He's been a lot of big help on a lot of stuff that we, we try to do in town, but you know, what? If you decide to do this, what's your suggestion to us? To cross that street every day to get onto the sidewalk to get to town? I mean, if, if, if you're going to increase the velocity of the traffic going through there, because that sounds like what you want to do, how are you going to the same time ensure the safety of people crossing the street? And it's not.
Open up the intersection, prevent gridlock. It is not to increase the velocity through the intersection.
Of course it's going to cre- uh, increase the velocity because people are going to have, feel that they have an open lane to go through rather than having, as Sean said, sneak over the curb and slow down and, and not having, you know, have an issue with the car.
Yeah, they weren't really slowing down.
I think Sean can explore options down the road, but unfortunately, I mean, I live on a, I live off of Whitney Street. I can't walk anywhere on this. There's a lot of places in town that unfortunately in where we live in Sherburne, you can't get to a sidewalk. I would love to be able to walk down to the bike trail that's less than a mile down the road, but I can't do that safely. So that's, that's just the reality of where we live. I think this is going to help with the traffic situation, which affects a lot of people. So if we need to vote on this, Jeff, I'd like to make a motion to, to approve this.
Do we need to vote on this? Uh, Sean, is that you're, you're asking? Approval of the turn lane? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I, I, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. So before we vote, I, I mean, I respect what you're saying, Dan, but I don't think we can answer here tonight. Obviously you're aware of that, but I, I think we should try to explore what other options there are to, to, uh, direct people perhaps differently. Maybe, uh, you know, going up the other way to go back to Route 16 and come in Route 16 or something. I don't know the answer, but we should take this into account if we can. I would like to see that happen.
What would need to be done for us to try and get us, uh, a piece of sidewalk and to have that crosswalk reinstated?
I, I don't think we can answer. We're really not prepared to answer that tonight. You know, we don't.
I've seen what, I'm not saying how to, I'm saying what do we have to do to try and, and, and move that along?
I don't know the answer to that is what I'm saying. We, we'll just have to look at that and, and see what the options are and then price the options, I think. Uh, Paul, Paul, and then Paul, then Marion?
So I, I want to agree with what, um, you said, Jeff, that we ought to be exploring options here. Where I come from is I think our job is to represent Dan and the residents of the town first. And to me, when all the points he's making are good points, then I'd like to see if we can find some way to help him. I don't know what the answer is because I'm not an engineer. But I do want to, I do want to help him. I do want to give him some solution. And I sure don't want to read in the newspaper one day that, that he or somebody in his family gets hit by a car.
Thank you.
So I, I I like the idea of, of, uh, continuing to look at it. If we have to put in a, uh, a crosswalk that's, doesn't meet every standard, but gives him some safety, then I'm in favor of that. But I, again, I, I want to explore more options here.
Well, I think we can, but we're moving ahead with this one and it, this helps the neighbors too, because I know people that live in that area that can't get home easily because of the, uh, traffic that gets stopped up there. So having the traffic be able to move with two lanes helps the residents also. You know, if they're trying to get home, you know, to cook dinner or something, they were at Roach Brothers or whatever and can't get through because the traffic's blocked up with people trying to go to Dover on Lake Street or whatever. So I, I think, I think it's a balance. I guess what I would say. So why don't we, I think Marion has a point and I think we should vote. Go ahead, Marion. You're muted though. There you go.
Yeah, I, I want to follow on from what, uh, Paul said. This is a problem all over town and this is a particularly bad spot. And, uh, you know, the, the planning board over the last several years uh, has worked with the complete streets program at the state level. The whole purpose of that program is to make streets safe for everybody, including pedestrians. And at one point, we had a complete assessment done of all kinds of complete streets thing, but uh, I agree that it would be worth sitting with a map of Sherburne and looking at the priority, high priority sidewalk connections. Because we talk a lot about pedestrian connections, but we have a lot of difficulty putting them in place. And, uh, I'm not sure, uh, Dan, in what committee, probably this, this committee is not going to be the one that has the bandwidth to figure that out. But, uh, is planning board here? I, if they're not, I'll say definitely take it to the planning board. And, uh, I, they would be interested in, in that problem and maybe working with another complete streets grant program to, uh, get some, get some, um, other experts in who've solved this in other towns because we do need to try to work on it.
Marion, it could also be, I don't know if there's still a traffic safety or public safety committee. One of, whichever one is still in existence, that could also be a group that could be looking at where.
They're both in existence, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think we should go ahead and take the vote on this and, um, keep this in mind.
Thanks for listening.
Thanks for coming. Um, we appreciate it. Marion?
And everybody else for that matter.
Uh, are we voting?
Yeah, we're voting. Paul, Paul made the motion, I think, and Eric seconded it. Or George, did you make it? Yeah.
Yeah, I.
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Paul?
I, I, I am going to vote now.
Okay, that's fine. I vote aye. So it was four to one on, um, approving the left turn lane at North Main Street and Lake. So, uh, as soon as you have the streets in perfect shape, this new snowplow is going to shave the chip seal down for you. Is that right?
Yeah, well, the chip seal, as you can imagine, isn't the easiest surface in the world to plow the first few years.
I know, I know, I know.
I compare it to plowing a rasp file across the road.
I think you want to wait a year or two to, for you ruin your plow, right?
Yeah, I would, yeah. I wish we could not have snow on it the first year. So, uh, actually the plower replacing Plows North Main Street, Coolidge, Kendall, and Washington Street. So it's pretty important we do this. I was actually shocked myself, not that I don't know my fleet pretty well, but to look up that the truck, the plower replacing is 15 years old. It's been in service in 2007. It's been through a couple of wars. It's not in very good shape. It's on the front of our 10 wheeler. And, uh, And uh. The the past couple of years, we've had to do some work on it. It it it's pretty sad. I wasn't going to bore you with a bunch of pictures. They all look the same whether they're. Two years old or fifteen years old. Uh. We got to keep good plow. By now, this truck already should have been replaced by the capital plan. The problem is we have a fleet of uh, some old internationals and some new internationals. The new internationals. Uh. Are on a pretty scary track right now. They they get towed out of town as often as they uh, get worked on at our shop. We're in a lot of problems with the new age trucks. So if you've noticed, I haven't come back with a quarter million dollar Snowfighter since I started. The last one showed up right after I started and. Uh, so now we're keeping the trucks longer, but that doesn't make the plows last any longer, so. I got to replace that one. There's uh. Currently, there's fifty seven thousand, five hundred and thirty nine dollars in the revolving account. Most of that current money is um. Was put in there by the fire and so quite a few sales by the fire department, coupled from the police department. We had. Uh, I'm guessing about forty thousand dollars with the sales before we created the revolving account, so that just all went back to the general fund. There's a couple items on the on. The auction right now. Our old chipper we hung on to for a while. We're finally going to get rid of another pickup. That'll more than pay for this plow, so. It's it's kind of a no brainer to use this money. I I would have just used some budget funds or even snow and ice funds, but we should be using this money. That's what it was for. We sold some obsolete equipment. Um, so I'm looking to buy a plow. Uh, you, I think the motion should just be for not to exceed fourteen thousand. The quote, which is on a state bid list, is for thirteen one thirty.
So moved.
Second. Thank you.
Second. So before we vote, I have a question for Dan Sickel, who's still on here. Like reserve funds, we usually have to have select board vote and advisory vote on a reserve fund transfer.
This is revolving though.
This is revolving, I know, so can this just be, I don't know the, we we'll certainly vote to do it. I just don't know if you would need to get. Advisory to vote or not. I don't know the procedure for revolving.
Have we, have we used this fund yet? That we use this?
I have not. Uh, the police. Probably did and the fire I know did. Uh, and Deb's on and I'm a hundred percent confident that it was written that it was under the sole discretion of the select board to use the money.
Yeah, that's.
Because I drafted it.
Yeah, that that's correct, Sean. It is just based on the select board vote.
Okay, so we have a a motion and a second, Marion?
I did. Did wait to Dan. I saw Dan Sickel.
Yeah, did you want to talk, Dan?
I I was just going to say, I I understand that it, you know, is as 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 Deb said, it's at the select board's discretion.
Okay.
I think advisory would be pleased to have a chance to kind of be in the loop on this.
Uh, yeah.
You know, before, I understand this trains left the station. But I think advisory would appreciate being in the loop on these things because it does affect. Uh, other aspects of thinking through uh, thinking through, you know, budget issues for the year. So just 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 wanted to slip that in.
Yeah, no, that's good, but it's a good use of these funds too.
Uh, yeah, I I understand that. I just, you know, it make makes sense to me, but I think I think the full committee would have uh. Would have liked a chance to have kind of heard about it and and thought about it through the context of capital budget plans and and all the rest.
Okay. All right, so let's vote. Thanks, Dan. Uh, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am my as well, five zero on that one, and that's our ass last item on the agenda except routine business. So do any of the select board members have a uh, report they'd like to get?
I do.
Okay.
Um, this is very brief. Kate Potter, um, from the regional school committee reached out to me. Because they are gearing up to start the union negotiations again. It's been three. Since they did the last one, so they need um, a member of the select board from each town. Um. And I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board because we need a volunteer and I did it last time.
We we'd already nominated you with an open session before you got here.
Yeah, I moved George be the representative.
I I I will, I have to think about that. I've got, I am so swamped with work and. Families that I'd have to see because it's it is, it is.
They called me too to see if we would nominate, so let me ask a question, clarifying question that I don't understand. Are we negotiating this? Does Pine Hill negotiate separate from the regional schools?
No.
Or is all one to go?
It's one, it's one union contract for all the, for all the. Union, the union, it's a one union.
One, one bargaining.
Technically, three different districts.
Yeah, one bargaining unit or whatever.
Exactly, exactly. And they have representatives from each of the, because when I said it last time, there's representatives from each of the schools. On their side, on the union side, and then from the um, negotiation side, it's. I think. Three member, four members from the region and then two from each of the Pine Hill and Chickering and then a selectman from each town.
Okay.
And that's how and and that's that's the voting members of the of the committee. Um.
So what would be the um, because she told me they're probably going to start it late October, I think is what she said. What would be the duration normally? I know it's not predictable.
The it's hard because the last time we did it, it was actually a pretty easy negotiation. It was, we it went fairly smoothly, um, because these can get pretty intense and. Fun and and I know the one three years before that was kind of kind of gnarly. Um, but. So so I mean, I think we were done by. Well, we had to be done because what year was that? If it's going into twenty twenty. So it must have been the fall right before the pandemic, right? Because we were done, or we were done meeting before we had any issues with that, so it had to be done in February. I think we were finished up in like January, February.
So you were maybe three months of.
Three or four months, yeah.
Yeah, so so maybe a range of three to six months or if it was.
Yeah, I would say, I think the the real goal is to make sure it's done before the end of the school.
In the school year.
Uh, that's good because the that's kind of where they're at.
I don't know, George. You've certainly uh, done your part in this. On the other hand. You're the one who knows most about this.
You're trained, yeah.
Could be most useful to them.
Yeah, I I know. I'd have to just, I do have, before I, can we vote on it next time just because I.
I think that's what I was going to suggest.
The other, the other, the other part that's a little bit awkward for me is I do sit across the table from some of my kids' teachers.
Yeah, yeah.
That can be a little bit awkward. Um, but, but you know, I did it last time. It went smoothly. It could be, like I said, harder if it didn't go smoothly. So.
Well, I think the the best thing, because they just reached out to me. I think it was day before yesterday, so uh, why don't we do that? We'll put this Diane on the.
Agenda two weeks from now. And if it goes past the election next year, the other concern is I'm not running again next year.
I know, I that that.
I'm done as of May.
Yeah.
That's my other concern.
You'll be the, you'll be the negotiator emeritus, though. We have, we have, we already got a title planned for you. All right. Does anyone else have any routine business or a motion to adjourn?
We'll adjourn.
Second.
All right, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Hi.
Eric?
Mike.
Paul?
Hi.
I am I as well, and thank you Diane for hanging in with us and everyone in the audience for hanging in with us. We appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Take care, everybody. Thank you.